Our Hairsville City Council meeting tonight. Welcome all of you here. We're happy to see you. Welcome Council and staff. Uh, we'll start with an opening, uh, which will be just by Councilmember Jackson.
Good afternoon. I have to say some America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice.
Before the beginning of this city council meeting, we're be grateful for the opportunity we have to meet and to serve and to meet with those who serve where we ask the life spirit to be in attendance with us as we talk about those things that are needful to our city. And help us to make true and correct decisions ahead of our citizens. We're grateful for employees for what they do and pray they'll they'll continue to bless and keep them safe in their endeavors. And we say.
Thank you, Councilmember Jackson. On the item three, our consent items. First on the item A is approval of minute, meeting minutes for January fourteenth, twenty twenty five and January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five is presented. Council, if you look at those, are there any changes or?
It's your line, because it's hardly here over here and I just don't know if it is.
Is it? It should be. Is it not? I'll turn it up. Are they all dead?
No.
Perhaps.
Yeah, I just didn't.
How to speak into the microphone?
Yeah, you weren't echoing.
Okay, try. Going back, have you looked at the minutes and? Any changes, any discussion? All right, can I have a motion please?
I'll make a motion for meeting minutes for January fourteenth, twenty twenty five and January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five as presented. Second.
Yeah, motion is second on favor.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item B is advice and consent to ratify the mayor's appointment for Weaver mosquito abatement district board. This is a, we have a chance as our city to be on the mosquito abatement board. Rover served in the past, or Councilmember Williamson has served in the past, and he has agreed to serve again. So I need your, um, approval to ratify him. Unless there's any discussion or?
If the mayor be one of all here, it's fine with me.
Thanks.
I hope that we ratify, uh, the mayor's appointment to the, uh, mosquito mosquito basement board, Rover Williams.
Second. Have a motion to the second on there.
Aye.
One of those. All right, thank you. Congratulations, Rover. You got it.
Thank you.
Right, item number four is an oath of office. I'm gonna turn the time over to Chief Miss.
Let me hear the new team member. Oh, Jake Holmes. Hope it came to us from North Austin, yeah, eight years of experience.
Yeah, yeah.
So happy to have Colton. He'll be off FTO towards the end of the month, so he'll be out and about. We're almost, well, we are fully staffed. Um, we'll introduce our newest hire next month and swear again, but, um, again, Colton, Jake.
He's called by Jake then, right?
I do go by Jake, yeah.
Our city reporters, where you live?
Can I be raised your right hand and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Paul Jake Holmes.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey and defend.
That I will support, obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
The Constitution of the State of Utah.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office.
And I will discharge the duties of my office.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Is your family wanting to have a picture with you?
I'm sure they do.
Okay.
Smile this way. All right, good looking family.
I gotta go.
Jake.
Thank you. Thank you.
You know, this is about the safest meeting I I've had in a long time. I appreciate you being here. I was wondering, it's mandatory. Right, we move on to the item number five, our business items. This is the discussion possible actions to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty four audit report. I'm gonna turn this over to our auditor, Rob.
Well, good to be with you tonight. So. Hey, we finished, uh, the financial statement audit for you for twenty twenty four. It's been a, uh, interesting task. Uh, there's been a lot of, uh, just cause we'll talk about those that we need to be, I think in all, we have about thirty six journal entries. That need to be done for your financial statements, but also I want to thank you as city council, and I mean, you guys volunteered uh, to try and direct the city, give organizations, Jenny and her staff uh, for the work that they do. Obviously, your police officers are on the share of the staff. They do a great job and try to manage what the city has. That we presented this, we've got the statements for you in draft form, just in case you notice any corrections or whatnot that need to be done. I was trying to get Jenny a little bit more time to go through them. Uh, and make sure they work, uh, or make sense at her standpoint, because we did draft these, but you as management need to accept those uh, on our behalf to maintain my independence. As far as the audit goes, one of the things that everybody's looking for, especially in state auditor's office, we send these to they will look for the independent auditor's report on pages one through four, or actually, it's yours is one through three. In a nutshell, we gave you an unmodified opinion. So after the adjustments that we've made to the financial statements, we don't feel there's any material misstatements within any of the fund statements, within any of the enterprise fund statements, and also your budget and so forth schedules. So it's the best opinionizing that Robert could give your organization. That being said, maybe let's cover like a couple of highlights on what's going on here at the city. Obviously, the last two years you bonded uh, one bond for six million dollars and another bond for nine million dollars to build a new public works building, which my understanding is almost done. So that'll be a great celebration for here for the city to be able to move into a new facility on your public works area. And then you also wish you had a nine million dollar bond for a new city hall. I don't know whether that's continuing to go forward or not, but if it is, uh, some good things to look forward here at the city. On pages seven through twelve, there's basically summary condensed financial statements. In your financial statements, this is the only portion where you will see a comparative summary basis between what happened in twenty twenty four compared to what happened in twenty twenty three. So maybe I'll just point out just a couple of quick highlights. On page seven is the summary of the state on the net position. So you have your current asset, current and other assets. So that's going to be basically your cash, your receivables, prepaid expenses. If you had inventories, those would be in there. Looking at your governmental activities, which is all your governmental funds, mainly your general fund, your capital project fund. I believe you have a four mile special service district. But and then your business funds are made up of your sewer fund, your stormwater fund, your garbage fund. Uh, I know I'm missing one. Streetlights, streetlights, if you feel. Those aggregated together. So business type activities for the most part this past year broke even. I think there was like an increase overall of three thousand seven hundred and fourteen dollars. So basically you broke even on your enterprise funds. One of the benefits that we have that we pointed out last year, your garbage fund had a deficit net position or fund balance, if you determine or equity, however you want to refer to it. And the statements is referred to as a net position. They had a deficit, the general fund assisted with that uh, project or that fund this year and build them out. Continue to, I think they did a transfer of about eighty four thousand or so dollars. They're now operational break even so that you as council can monitor what's being done with your contract with waste manager. And increase the fees as appropriate. When you get an increase, make sure you pass it on so that fund can stay pretty much break even. Uh, as far as your governmental activities, your current other assets have held about constant from the prior year. You would expect based on the two bonds that you issued, you received basically an influx of fifteen million dollars in cash last two years. Uh, so as you can see on the capital asset line, you've gone from five point seven million dollars up to nine million dollars. Less because we have about three point two million dollars in construction in progress on that new building. Uh, in addition, you have some significant current and other liabilities. Well, obviously one of the accounts payable that's in there, there's a nine hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar payment that was accrued for our own construction in reference to the building. Hence the reason they've gone from six point eight million dollars to one point five million dollars on your tables, your long term debt. Uh, we started paying down on both bonds to the tune of over four hundred thousand dollars, which is disclosed in the notes. So your long term debt has gone from fifteen point five to fifteen point one, your governmental funds. Uh, overall, net position increases past year by one point four million dollars roughly from twelve point six million dollars up to fourteen million dollars. Now, you can see some of the breakout, uh, on that on page number nine, where it gives you a summary comparison of what's happened in our revenues, full program and general revenues. General revenues has been over taxes. That you collect property tax, sales tax, franchise tax, and then your interest income and so forth. And then you have your expenses by function of government. Overall, uh, bottom line increase is a one point three million dollar increase in governmental activities compared to the two million dollar increase last year. That's the main question. And there's some graphs and charts that you can look at as far as support. One of the interesting ones on page number eight is when you start looking at your functions of government, how much of it generates their own revenues compared to how much is subsidized by your tax revenues. So really, if you were to look at that graph on page eight, your general government, public safety and parks and rec are mainly supported by tax revenues. Whereas community development and streets and public improvements have some revenue sources they're able to bring in and help support their costs. So it gives you an idea where the funds for the government are being, where they're, where they're being used and how they're being supported. On page thirteen of the same, this gives you more detail for the current year that we extended on June thirtieth of twenty twenty four. On where your assets and liabilities lay in more detail, uh, cash and cash equivalents, you're holding at three million dollars. Obviously, there's a bunch of restricted cash. You say, well, what's restricted? Well, the restrictions is your bond money. And money you've collected from developers that you can't use for other purposes other than what they've been designated for. So there's a significant portion of your assets that are set for that. And then it also details out, here's our, uh, capital assets, uh, minus accumulated depreciation in the middle. And then you have your liabilities, the main liability is being your bonds at thirteen point nine million dollars and a net pension liability, which is the city's, uh, pension retirement that's managed by Utah Retirement Systems. Your proportion of that unfunded liability, uh, overall is five hundred forty two thousand. Benefit with Utah Retirement Systems, they're funded anywhere from nine eighty nine, I think is the lowest, depending on which category you're at to over one hundred percent, like in our firefighter. So the state of Utah has done a very excellent job in managing the funds better than some states where you're at like, uh, twenty percent or less than being funded. So the state retirement, this isn't anything that you're asked to pay. They do increases through either increasing your contribution rates, was there, those are changed slightly and or market performance. So as long as the market continues to perform well. A few years ago, there was no net and pension liability throughout the entire state. Uh, that was all on a net pension asset number, but that's really just a paper number for your benefit. That's your portion of the overall system. Uh, you see deferred property taxes under deferred inflows. Uh, that's the, now, she probably just collected mainly in November and December. I don't think they were levied back in during our fiscal year, what the year in November and December for the last part. Um, let's get on to, uh, page number fifteen, your governmental funds. This is what you deal with more on a regular basis. This is what you guys adopt budgets for. Where you listen to budget amendments. And I'll cover that statement in just a sec. But in our general fund, the state has a, an item when you start looking at your fund balances in that fund. For the general fund, the law requires that your fund balance on anything assigned or unassigned, because you have control over this, those two categories. You need to be between five and thirty five percent. So your number down the bottom, you see there's nothing assigned. Your unassigned portion is one point seven five million dollars. You compare that to the general fund operating revenues, and you come out to about thirty four percent. I think it's thirty three point nine nine percent. To be specific, so you were on that high end, which is a great category to be. If we have to give a state compliance finding, that's usually the one that's that's the best. It tells you, you've got some funds, go out and go ahead and do some projects. Uh, but that kind of gives you how healthy the, the city might be as to where that percentage falls. Uh, if you look at the capital project fund, if we look at the revenue, uh, it's an income statement on the next page. Capital project fund had a, uh, loss this past year of two point four million dollars almost. But that's expected because that fund also received all the bond money. So all of that construction funds that you're doing for public work, city hall is sitting in that fund. So the next several years, you would expect that fund to continue to de- to decrease as those profits are done. Overall, the general fund had a net change in fund balance, a positive increase of almost a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And the four mile is this, it's small anyway. From a budget standpoint, on page nineteen, overall, one of the things that you want to look at is where we end that with final appropriated expenditures compared to the actual expenditures. So if you look towards the lower right corner, you have a one point one million dollar savings from what you approved as a final budget for the year compared to what the city actually spent, so five point seven million compared to four point six million dollars total expenditures. And then you obviously have some, uh, transfer out additional expenditures that are a part of an other financing services and use. This is interesting stuff. Any questions?
Of course.
Let's talk about your proprietary funds just briefly, and then we'll go into, uh, final reports, uh, any comments or questions that you might have that I can answer. So on your, uh, proprietary funds, your sewer, stormwater, streetlights, garbage, I like to look at the net position of each of those funds. So at the bottom of page twenty one in your sewer fund, you've got two point two million dollars. You can see just about about one million dollars of that is in capital assets. It's not going to help you pay for resources. That's to generate the, the systems that you provide. Stormwater is at two point nine million dollars, streetlights at forty four thousand. And garbage has a positive fund balance of fourteen thousand nine ninety two. And then your internal service fund activity, uh, which manages basically your fleet, one point six million dollars. So overall, all of your proprietary funds are a positive position, which is what you want. They should be hopefully self sustaining from user charges. And right now, all of those funds are, are working the way that they should be. After you corrected the garbage fund this past year. The footnotes to the financial statements give you more information about what's going on with your investments. The only investment that you maintain is your investment in the Utah state public treasures investment fund, which a lot of organizations throughout the state are part of. This past year, you saw a huge uptick in the interest rate. So you, instead of earning just a little bit of interest, there were significant earnings across all the entities that we audit. I mean, it's on to the tune of they got like five million dollars in, in interest income. But the downside of that, because we've also had inflation, costs on everything have gone up. So it's kind of the cost of wiped out some of the interest earnings that you've been able to generate almost. But I think right now you have about eight point six million dollars sitting in the PTF as of the end of June. Uh, and that doesn't include your bond cash. That's just cash reserves that you guys have. Some of that being restricted for very projects. The notes go on to give you other information, uh, in detail about the, uh, URS retirement pension system and the calculations or systems that you're involved in and where those fundings are at. There is a significant estimate in that in a discount rate, um, that's used, that's determined by the actuary and coordination with management at URS. They've elected right now to use a six point eight percent discount rate. So that's a significant estimate. If you were to change that just by one percent, you could go to where your liability, that five hundred thousand will probably more than double. Or it could become an asset if they were to just change that one percentage point on each way. Want to go to the back of the statements and then answer any questions that you have. So overall, we give two additional reports right at the very end. The first one is the independent auditors report on, on your internal controls over financial reporting, your compliance with laws and regulations and so forth. We don't have any compliance issues. We feel you're complying with any grant agreements that you get, the way those, that was funds are spent. And also you're complying with all the state laws and regulations report on stuff that needs to be filed to not only the state auditor's office, but to the division of finance for unclaimed property and approving your budgets and doing all those adoption, staying within the fund balance percentage on your general fund. Those are all good. The one item that we do have, uh, on page sixty, we mentioned that on page sixty one. We do have an internal control finding on the number of journal entries and the reconciliation of financial records and the preparation of this statement with your finance director leaving Jill's been thrown into the deep end. And not only doing payroll treasury duties, she's been asked to try and tackle some of the financial uh, aspects of, of this stuff. So we had a difficult audit. Not anything that Jill has done. We're trying to provide her some training and stuff she can look for, but there were a lot of variances that we noticed as we were doing the audit. I've issued a separate report to you. This is a communication letter. It's a template letter that's required by the AICPA, but in that letter, we identify, here's the one finding that we have. We had to make it also last year, we called it a significant deficiency in your internal controls over financial reporting in that the city doesn't have proper reconciliations on a lot of accounts. We had a lot of problems with prepaid assets. Significant problems with the accounts payable, sub ledger not balancing to the general ledger control account. Uh, fixed assets had some variances, debt had some various stuff that was counted as expenses. Shouldn't have been expenses, should have been reductions of liabilities and so forth. So you have that entire list and I'd be happy to review any maybe that you don't understand. Some of them were tracking accounts and some were actually provided by Jill at the very end to help show where the, uh, how much impact fees you still have on hand that haven't been spent. As maybe you know, when you collect an impact fee from the developer, you get six years to spend those funds. So if you don't appropriate or spend those within six years, technically state losses, that needs to be refunded back to the developer or individual that paid the fee. Uh, and I know Jill's updating that report here last a week ago. Last week. So we made the adjustments to your restricted amounts and so forth within that report. We had asked, no, and then the final report is on your people's and state laws and regulations. We had a minor item on some, a report that got turned in with July's balances need to be June, uh, rather than issue a finding, I just asked Jill to amend that report and submit it to the state division of finance to correct that one. So no issues there. Uh, no issues with you guys adopt budget, you amend budget, you're not over budget in any fund. Uh, so from an operator, from a state compliance standpoint, you're operating in accordance with what the state wants you to do. Uh, biggest item is, what do we do with the finding and recommendation on internal controls and financial reporting? How can we do stuff better? So maybe I, I don't look up to you. What questions do you have?
So we've basically been trapped in a hard place in the internal because we've lost a financial director.
Sort of, yes. Uh, we, we had a lot of a lot of work to do to, to replace a person with Jill stepped up to the plate. She, she spent most of her Christmas vacation here trying to work with, uh, Rob and getting that audit report done and working out all the kinks in here. So really Jill has been wonderful. Rob has been. Yeah, Rob, but it's definitely telling us what we need to do and how we need to get caught up in compliant and, and we will go ahead and take his advice on what we need to do in the future to bring everything into compliance. Correct. Absolutely.
Yeah, one of the benefits that we bring to you, this isn't the only city that we do. We do about uh, seventeen to eighteen municipalities, uh, throughout the state, mainly along here to Los Angeles from, from down in, uh, Utah County to up into, uh, Logan, or I guess that's Cache County and so forth. So we have some experience. Uh, we also do a couple of counties. We do several special districts. So this isn't our only rodeo that we do. We've had great experience. My training started twenty five years ago in the state auditor's office. Uh, so I was trained in governmental accounting and so forth. I've been doing it for a while. So I know some tips and tricks and sometimes it's hard. It's like I love to just let some stuff go. But it's how can we, how can I help make you, uh, a better organization? I don't like writing the findings. I really don't. Uh, it's not something that I come out and I, I want to do. I want to publicize it to the public. Uh, like our last state auditor, he seemed to be like, hey, I want to have a gotcha and publicize it out there. I don't like doing that. I want to say, how can I make you better as an organization? And how can I provide Jill, who's been stepped into a role that she wasn't hired to do? How can we give her some tips and tricks and some things she can look at to try to reconcile and so forth, depending on what, uh, how you try to go down. I mean, I know that proceed, that position formally was just a part pack position. That's hard to find somebody that could fill that, but also to try and find somebody full time, that takes a lot of resources. Because that position's not exactly a cheap position to fill if somebody's looking for a full time position. So it's weighing the benefits. I do have access to somebody else who does this. He owns an accounting firm and he assists governments because that's what his training is in. He's a former finance director with Lehigh City. So perhaps that could be an option if you're looking for resources and or you uh, have another CPA firm sometimes step in. I know we've done that on behalf of Mapleton City. Where we helped them prepare their stuff, but this past year, their person, their audit firm quit. So then we became the audit firm. I said, well, we can't do both. We can't do your books and audit the books because that impairs my independence. So we got to maintain an independence stamp on there, but I'm happy to look at options. You continue to provide the training. I know I'm busy right now with tax season coming up, or I guess my twelve thirty one audits, but I'd love to come back in May, June timeframe and go through some stuff before you have your six thirty twenty five year in and give Jill some additional. Here's what you should look at as you get ready to try and close the books for twenty twenty five. So that we don't have all these potential journal. Some of them probably maybe didn't need to be done, but we were making corrections. So it's let's correct everything, reset everything to zero so you can track it going forward. Because one of the hardest problems that we spent days on was accounts payable. Why is accounts payable just so far off? We even had, I think, two phone calls, two or three phone calls with Casell, your software provider on what's causing the sub ledger not to balance with our general control ledger. Those should just that harmonize with one another. So trying to figure out, is there a procedure that Jill needs to change on the way she does some stuff? And I think there is. On how invoices are dated. I don't know if I'm a software expert in Casell, but I think there's some stuff that can be changed on the way those are input to help keep stuff in balance that I've been noticed during the audit, but I also have access to other organizations because of the significant time that I've honored certain organizations that are on Casell, they're willing to help provide some training, and she probably have access to somebody else that she knows up there. So she has some resources to try and help out.
Yeah, that was, that was really my question. Was do we have resources? And are you one of those?
Yeah, I don't want to throw it in and say, you know what? Figure it out yourself. I've got some resources to help provide you some recommendations and some potential fix. I had this several years ago, back in two thousand seventeen, I gave my worst audit report ever to a city that came in as like, did you, they were off more than a million dollars just in revenue. It's like, uh, did you open up like a Costco or a carding machine? Because your revenue is spiked by like thirty percent. Now, everything's kind of been the same. It's like, well, we have a problem and that problem existed from the very start. It's like, you should have noticed if you're reviewing your budget to actual reports that you get on either a monthly or quarterly basis. I indicated that city says something should have been missed because you guys, right out of the gate were five, six hundred thousand dollars ahead of where you should have been, but nobody noticed any of this. I can't put it all on finance director. It just got missed by everybody. So that one led to a significant efficiency material weakness. And their solution was to hire this individual that I know, they hired him to help with some of the basic, trying to do some of the basics. Does he get into all the detail? Maybe not as much as I would like him to. But he can keep you out of trouble and he knows the basics because he's been doing government work for like thirty years. So that's one option. Also have access to maybe somebody else that's interested in doing it. I just don't know what they're, they worked for another CPA firm, uh, in Ogden, I believe. And she's interested in doing all the, on the side. She used to work with me in the state auditor's office, so I know her work very well as well. If she was available, she'd be great hire. I know her work very well as well. If she was available, she'd be great hire.
I think that's what we need to do. Then we'll need to. But find someone to help Jill and the city so that we don't have the deficiencies.
That's concern I have, you know. You've raised your flag and helped us. But I don't wanna continue seeing you being buried behind all these things going on. If there's more people. We need to ask hires resources. Basically things bounce and we need love that.
Yeah, we'll discuss that probably as staff and then we need to go get back with you.
Right, because it wasn't one area. If you look and say, were the problems just in accounts pay? They weren't just in accounts payable. They were probably went through prepaid or off. We had to adjust those. We had to adjust capital assets. We had to adjust payroll accruals and so forth. But those are things that we can help teach Jill so that she understands. She's really never, I mean, that was her responsibility. Now we bring that in, we can give her some guidance on how those should be done and stuff balances that she can check each and every month and make sure stuff is staying in balance. Like AP, she understands how that works now. So she can run two reports and say, am I still in balance? If I'm not. She understands, well, here's some of the procedures we learned from Cassell and then some of the tips and tricks she learned from me. Here's what you need to do to try and figure out, well, where is the variance? Cause sometimes it's like this is what should have been recorded. Sometimes the hard part is what. For it so that we can try and fix those things. Try and figure out sometimes what the system has done or what you've done to record things isn't always. The simplest of tasks. But it's doable. I'm here to tell you this is doable because in one year the other city fixed. All their problems and I took away the material weakness and I took away the significant deficiency. So it is doable.
Any other questions or items? Thank you for your help in this. I know this has been a lot of work for you too. And we appreciate Jill and the city and. Her willingness to work with you and and all the staff, all the things they did. I I know it's a huge thing. I've been waiting for this for a long time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um I will need a motion.
Watching me accept the fiscal year twenty twenty-four audit report.
Motion is second all in favor. Motion is accepted. Thank you again.
We'll take draft off and issue it in final unless there's any. Spelling errors. I think the numbers are solid. If there's any spelling errors, we'll correct them and then issue it tomorrow.
I found some, so I'll send it to you.
Appreciate it, guys.
We would have been in.
No, and I appreciate that. And it's really hard to come into a system you don't know in a job that you weren't trained for and just try to figure it out. So we appreciate that very much.
Right, we need to move on to the item B, discussion possible action to modify spring fall cleanup for garbage services.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This is a follow-up discussion that began two weeks ago at our retreat. Uh so I've just put in memo form basically what we talked about at the retreat. As far as direction that you'd like to give staff on. How to. Operate the spring and fall cleanup, whether we want to modify that, have it at the new public works building. Whether we want to try and check for residency on those that are utilizing that service. Uh whether we want to. Cancel it. We went across the board, I think, for that discussion. So. We just wanted it to be a formal action so that staff knows what you'd like us to do before our April. Spring cleanup date.
So I know when I go with my son-in-law to the battlefield. Dump and clean up, he has to show ID that is in fact a battlefield resident. Or still get in there, so. Seems like it was working pretty good and then I think would. Help us kind of monitor the whole thing a little better. If someone were there and say at the new facility. Check it as they come in and come out and then. When the closing time comes, we close it up, even if it's a little later. Nobody can access it at night and dump off whatever they decide to dump. I just think. I I personally like. Like it if we move in that direction.
I also see a potential for, you know, still abusing that because it may. Detour some of the non-residents, but you have a friend who lives in there. Is there a limit on having garbage you can take?
So we haven't, we haven't done any limits. We haven't, actually, we haven't monitored outside of our staff coming in and cleaning up after. The evening time drop off.
Because there's nothing to stop anybody from. Driving anyone's truck full of trash with their ID and dropping them. So I don't know that that would fix the problem, but it may help some.
Are we looking for a problem that's not there? We don't know that, right? We don't know if there's a lot of people using. No. Neighborhoods. Is it when we pay for the cost of the dumpster, do we also have to pay for the weight? Is it going in there? So that. If we monitor that, that might offset paying someone overtime to be there. If it's if it's indeed a problem, but we don't know that, right?
Well, it'll also help if we have somebody there that can tell them, I'm sorry, we don't accept that. We don't accept that. And we don't end up paying for it at the end. So I I have no problem with that, with somebody being there. You know, being honest and saying, sorry. Bring those in there and you're tired and things like that. Just. Monitor the whole situation.
I realize that if people want to get it in, they'll figure out a way. You can't stop it. But at the same time, I think it's keeping honest people honest. And it's also showing, I think, our residents that we care about. Utilizing it and keeping it here for them. I remember we talked about the dumpsters that are over in the park. You know, mattresses and everything else is put into that. You've locked them up and they damaged them and thrown them in anyhow. I mean, there's only so much you can monitor and people will still figure out a way to putting, getting rid of the trash. But I think a lot of times this is being abused. And I think it's over being used. And I think a lot of us coming in from outside construction workers and people who say we'll take advantage of this here. As far as, you know, residents coming in. Uh I would hope the residents here would monitor who they're sharing their information with. I think it's a good start. I think it's a good start. And I think it needs to be kind of a check of dogs. Be an extra overtime as far as what do we take? Or, you know, have staff members there to monitor. I also think it sets a precedence. We won't accept tires. We won't accept this. Or batteries. That seemed to be some of the big problems. And I know they can still bury them in the bottom and they still get them. But at the same time, I think the fact is it's visual. It's there. I've always appreciated the fact that you've had two different dump sites. And that itself, I think, helps. You're always, you know, as I say, you're always gonna get the person who wants to sneak something in. You can't stop it, but you cancel it down. And you can set a precedence and say, this is what we're doing for Harrison's residents. I think it's a good positive thing for residents if they'll take advantage of it. But I think if we don't control it, then I think it's gonna get worse and worse. It's not gonna get better. And then I think when you shut it down, then it becomes an anger, an anger thorn in residents' side. Unless we can, we can say this is what's happening to your money and it's not worth our time. So I I I wanted to say let's control it, put it in place that we can still monitor it. And see what's gonna come out with. I think it'll take a couple of years to see how it balances.
Brian, has it got worse over the years?
Yeah, I would I would just say maybe think about what you want. Us as a city to accept. Because what's gotten worse is the mattresses and the freezers and fridges. Um no big items like that. And you know, when this was began, that that was not the intent of this. At all. So but that's what it's turned into. We get more, far more garbage than we do green waste now for sure.
Um I guess. A question I have too is, you know, we've been talking about, we need new equipment for. The sports teams and things like that. And this is fifteen thousand dollars um that we could. Tell residents that we're using their money for something that benefits the community a little bit more. And allow them to haul their own trash away. Is this, I mean, I I understand what you're saying as far as that shows the community that we care and that we do care about Harrison and how it looks. But is it sending the message that we want to send? Um could we show that we care in different ways and in different programs?
That's on you. That's council's decision. You need to say that.
How many dumpsters did we do on trims and leaves, shrubs?
How many dumpsters total? I I I did, I don't count. Uh how many dumpsters there are and it wouldn't matter anyway because they take them if they're half full or full. So it really. Doesn't matter that way.
Cause I see a lot of people who utilize that to get rid of shrubs and things like that, you know.
We could reduce it to only green waste. And we're not accepting garbage. That's what the intention of the program was, was for people to clean their yards up. So if you want us to adapt the drop, the cleanup program to strictly green waste. We would still have to monitor it. I I think my recommendation would be we still have it locked up. And still have proof of uh residency when people utilize it. Cause outside of that, we wouldn't be able to control what they're putting in the dumpsters, but uh we could reduce the program. By half and only take green waste. But it's just an option.
This decision.
Uh we can, we can table it.
Okay, so we got one.
So we can table it if you'd like for you to.
What are we gonna think about for? Next thirty days and we're gonna limit it or are we gonna let it be open?
Think how to get information out and get some facts in from residents. Nothing will make much difference. I don't know, Will.
You know.
Their input, I think, is important.
On that note, it would be easier if we make a decision tonight. We have two newsletters to.
And I, and honestly, I don't think. If we can, if we limit it to green waste, let's say that we cut five thousand out of both. You know. Hypothetically out of both times. Then that's a decision that we should make because we're saving the money. And we have cameras, right? We will, so we'll know if people.
And it will be behind. And this is, you know, as as we've all kind of seen. You know, Brian and his crew come in and clean up what's left. The other agencies I've ever worked for, it is very monitored. It is always locked up after hours. Yes, there is some weekend work. Like a Saturday, they leave it up, they open it up. So you do pay some overtime to some employees to reflect their schedule. But they also. Are very diligent on total counts of garbage. Garbage can't, you know, times that it's tipped, times that it's. It it's a lot more monitored, which it, you know, hasn't been since. I don't, and I and I haven't kept track of that, so I don't have those particular numbers, but I can say that garbage gets dumped far more than the green waste. So we're six to seven thousand dollars total in the spring and another six to seven in the fall. So if we take away garbage, I would guess you're looking at a couple thousand dollars for green waste. The bulk of it definitely is garbage.
Wish they could take to the dump and. Responsible for themselves.
Yeah, and I and I have no problem with the, you know, you have to identify that you live here in the city. I mean, you have to do that when you go to the dump.
We have to do that. You got a library.
I I I don't see a problem. I think green waste is great. We'll cut out the garbage and. You know, we have it locked up when, see what happens. So if we can save a few thousand dollars. Kids getting informed.
Any more discussion on that?
I'm just thinking back on what you said, Justin, that a lot of people store up their mattresses and stuff and lay them up against the side of the house. And then they dump all that stuff at the end. So your comment was, if I remember right, we just let it stay and how it kind of looks. Trash here on people's side of the house. It's their problem. I realize that. What was your feelings? And what did you say about that?
Um like I said, it it's all, it's not necessarily alongside their houses as much as I sees. When it's just thrown out in a vacant field. And then. How do we get that that build owners like, well, it's not my responsibility. They wanna call the city. Well, is it her responsibility? Not not really, you know, it's just. It's always, it's always a fickle matter. Um of how of how you go about it. I know some cities have contracted directly with the county. That. You get a one time a year, one or two time a year load pass. That reduces the fees for our residents to go and take their own trash. I I know that happens in Roy because I've utilized that. Cause I'm a resident of Brooklyn. Um but again. Either way you guys go, I think. The the major consensus as staff. On our end is I think it needs to be monitored. Someway better.
The first thing we need is if we can't control the trash, let's go back to what originally was and do green waste. You know, until you hear something different, you want a decision from my thoughts. I know it cuts things out, but at the same time it gives us a pace. Yeah. Cut cut the stuff out of the tree and let it grow again.
So what I'm hearing.
Sounds like a kind of a consensus.
All right, so you wrap it up. What do you think you're hearing?
So what I think I'm hearing is that we are going to limit it to green waste to reduce costs and tip fees. And have it back in a secured area with proof of residency. All right. Is that what I'm understanding, everybody?
I'll try a little overtime to. Right, make that happen.
Yeah, and we understand the staff that it is.
We'll be have, we'll have time to put that out. To the city residents, but also I think you need to. Uh we dealt with this over, where I worked at the desert industries and we had to come to the point and tell people absolutely not. It cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars.
We we will, we will monitor and there will be signage up.
Signage.
Although as they pull in, we'll set up that they have to pull in through one gate. Um we'll have somebody there to greet them, verify an ID. Verify what they have. And again, if it's it's all green waste, if it's too heavy for them, if they've got some bigger logs, then we'll have equipment there to load the dumpster. If not, they can personally load the dumpster themselves. Even better.
Well, if you do it now too, this gives the staff some time to, not only put it in the newsletter, but to set this up because this is a brand new program.
Exactly.
We can see how it goes here. The fall, we can change it with you too.
Just reevaluate.
So as a reminder, this discussion point came up at our retreat based on the general fund financing the spring and fall cleanup. So it's already been. Budgeted for the spring cleanup at the end of this fiscal year. So if we try the program out, we can give you. That feedback as we go into the waste management contract and and discuss garbage fees. Because it is staff's preference that that move out of the general fund and be paid by the garbage services.
Right.
In the next fiscal year. So that is just a reminder of how we ended up talking about garbage.
I'm curious about how Roy does theirs as far as what you've said. They lower the fee for this one time to dump their garbage.
Yeah, I don't know the exact contract with Weaver County. Yes, we will, we are sure we can look into.
We'll get it out.
I'm just, I'm curious.
All right, so we need a motion to wrap this up.
I'll make a motion that we, for the spring cleanup, move to just green waste, have it monitored, okay, the overtime. And signage that's needed and things like that. Well, second.
Does that cover everything, Steph? All right. Motion is second. Okay, motion carries. Thank you for the discussion. All right, item C, discussion possible action to surplus miscellaneous items. Jenny, again.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, we're going to condense this memo. The recommend or the request from staff. This is just going to be specifically the two refrigerators that are, that were. Traded out by COVID. Uh CARES Act money um to make sure that we were in compliance with COVID nineteen regulations. We. Have two fridges that were, that are just being stored at the cabin that we want surplus and. Not be storing anymore, our preference is to try to sell them if possible, so we don't have to pay to. Sure.
That'll actually be three fridges.
Oh, I'm sorry, did we have three?
Over in the public works building, okay, okay.
I say that we get together.
We will amend that to the requests for three refrigerators to be surplus.
Any questions, Council? Kind of a motion.
I'll make the motion that we, uh. Well, we, we go ahead with the action on the surplus of the three refrigerators.
Well, second. Motion the second, all in favor.
Bye.
Hey, motion passes, thank you. Item D, we, oh, twenty twenty five city, we can talk about this in the retreat, and I'm gonna turn the time back over to Jenny again.
Thank you, Mayor, uh, before we jump into twenty twenty five goals, I think it would be, um. Appropriate for us to talk about twenty twenty four goals and where we ended up at the end of that year. The, the top of that list was our park impact, the analysis, I'm happy to report that that will be on your March agenda, we will have our third party. Consultant that conducted the study and analysis on that, and we'll be presenting that in March, so that has been. The drafts have been finalized and we'll have that on your agenda. The second item was Ben Lomond groundbreaking. Uh, we do have an update on that, we have. Seen that project. Was sold at the end of twenty twenty four, the new developer has already moved very quickly, provided the city with a modified. Uh, plat, they're gonna phase, phase two, if you remember the approval of phase two A was very large. And included the entire spine road, which has been causing a lot of the issue with getting the infrastructure in place. They're still going to do all the utility work on the spine road, but they're going to complete that in sections as the development goes. Um, which, this, which staff and our engineer were, were, we were fine with that. So we did actually hold a pre-construction meeting with them. And you're going to see a lot of dirt moving if you haven't already over there, so that's exciting to get that started.
And the new company.
It's called Flagship Homes.
Which.
Is who bought the project. Uh, the third one was hiring a full-time planner, was on our goal list last, last year, but as we reported at the retreat, the. Contract work that we are utilizing our part-time planner through Johnson associate. Associates is working out quite well, we'll have a better idea at the end of this fiscal year. What the cost to the city was, but as far as the work and the workload off of my plate, it's been really good. Um, economic and commercial development. That one, we are. Suggesting that we transfer over to twenty twenty five, uh, based on. A lot of the. Time that is now, um. Been freed up in my schedule, I've been able to, we, we helped with the grant that we applied for, the GOEO grant that you approved in January, there's some under recreation grant that. Is out there that we want to apply for as well, and so. I think we'll have a little bit more focus in this next year on being able to meet that goal. Uh, transparency and communication was also on there, we hired. Uh, John Gilfoyle to help with our PR and they are. The update on that is they've taken all the information for our websites and they are in the process of creating our new website information. We have a tentative release date of March on that. The utility rate analysis, we're also asking to push that to twenty twenty five, I'm asking a, a third-party consultant for. Estimates on what it would cost the city to conduct those analysis. And studies to get our, our fee schedule in line with what the costs are to. To keep up with our infrastructure. Uh, complete the public works building. We're hopeful that in another thirty and forty days, we will have the completion of our public works building, but as you can physically see, it's been moving along. Our moderate income housing, we did. Received compliance again for last year. And our business license fee study was conducted and adopted in March of last year, so for twenty twenty five goals, these are staff's suggestions. That we focus and adopt a new capital improvement plan. To identify projects in the future particularly related to the. Possibility of having the general obligation bond election for the city hall and the public safety building. The. At the time I wrote these, I put Ben Lomond groundbreaking, but I think that's gonna happen. And. The utility rate analysis, uh, the attainable housing ordinance, planning commission will be holding their second work session tomorrow evening to talk about. What we've been calling a critical homeownership ordinance, um, but we can. Change that name, update it, but the, the gist of it is to focus on trying to bring in affordable or attainable housing into Harrisville. Uh, we want to list our transportation projects as our goal for this next year in twenty twenty five, utilizing the appropriations funding that this. The ci- city received from the federal government and also the GOEO grant to complete or start our seventeen fifty north road that will. Connect seven fifty west over to highway eighty nine. And on the last one is to. Reevaluate and look at our strategies related to the moderate income housing and our general plan. As we've been working on those strategies for a number of years now, we've completed some of them, we've also. Gotten new focus and new directions from the state on some things, so that's probably something we bring. Keeping in mind that any general plan amendment has to go through public hearing at planning commission and then adoption through city council. Those are the proposed goals for twenty twenty five for staff, and any others that the council would like to give direction on.
Those be written down, cause I can't write that down.
Yes, Jack has done a great job of keeping notes on those for us.
I, uh, just a question. People ask if, if we were to be recalcitrant and out of compliance with the state's mandate. On the affordable housing, they assess a daily fee, you know how much that is?
That's, I mean, off the top of my head, do you know it?
I don't actually know that there's a scheduled fee, they might be able to find out. One of the biggest problems with not being compliant with the, that plan is it will directly affect what transportation funds you're allowed to, that is what they tied it to. So, whether there is a twenty five dollar a day fee, I don't know, but. Anyone that thinks advocates that we should be not compliant. Your roads are gonna be super expensive. Cause you don't have access to those.
It's good information to have because.
Yeah.
Believe it or not, there are constituents out there that.
Yeah.
Don't think it's for real.
No, and that's fair, but that is, that is the stick that. That's stayed tied to that, what are your. Is it your T-TIP funds?
Yeah.
Class B and C.
Class B and C.
Um, and then also when you are compliant in a manner that's, um, above the minimum, you actually have priority funding for certain projects through the T exhibit, that's what it is. So that is the, that is the stick that goes with, with that.
And they're not done yet. You don't know what can come out by the end of the legislature too.
Everyone crush your fingers, there are actually some talks to whittle that back. For, so everyone. You have friends down there, call them, tell them to whittle it back.
Uh, yeah, thanks, really, thanks.
Really, like, you could, you could lose a hefty portion of your road, so to these stuff.
That's why. I think the current does actually have a required fine to the only Walker fund, housing fund. That I remember. But not significant enough to. Impact our roads.
And I don't, I don't know what that amount is, it's.
I don't.
It's small compared to what you would lose for asphalt.
It's a lose-lose if you don't do it.
You know, if we feel like that's something that constituents really wanna know, is that something we can put on the website or in the newsletters?
Absolutely, we can, we can address that, we can look up the state code and make sure that we have it accurate.
Just have it posted somewhere for them. That's useful.
Any other goals that you want to add? Things those are hefty.
Do the next year.
Hey, and going over the last year, that was kind of exciting to know, yeah, check, check. Good. Thank you to staff for doing that. We don't have to prove that, do we? It's just a, okay, just an item of discussion. Item number six, our public comment, this is for anyone in the audience, if you have something to address the council with. Under the podium, on the state, you know, three minutes. Not gonna wait three minutes, I'll just go on. Item number seven, is Mayor Council follow up, uh, Council, I'm gonna start with you. Max, do you have anything to add?
Go.
Okay. Okay, Karen.
No. Okay, I was thinking about it, all right.
Just thanks for all your hard work, you. And the rest of Seth, thank you.
Uh, Steve.
Um, just, we had our. Senior lunch today and it was, uh, that's a pretty good turnout and, uh, Justin. Still did some questions and he got out alive, so it was, as I all know, a good day.
Thank you. I'm just gonna give a. A reminder that the Vingetta Lake convention is going to be in April in St. George, get with Jenny if you're planning on attending that. Here before you know it, I'm gonna go back over here to staff, uh. Director Shinsel, you have anything?
Just. As we all see, and Jenny. Alluded to earlier with. Cautiously optimistic within a thirty to forty-five day window of moving to the new public works facility, so that's. Really exciting, um, and then. As, Jimmy also stated, that moment is under, underway, um, so. We're going to only work in a term, again, there's gonna be another area of the city that connects fiber is coming through. So, no, no lack of keeping eyes on. All the living parts that's transpiring throughout the city, so that's what our main focus is right now.
Thank you.
Well, I hope I don't jinx it for Justin, but with the lack of snow, uh, my guys have been able to stay at the parks and stay busy, so they're still getting some projects done out there. Uh, still going through our, ours, Justin takes care of our big equipment, we're going through our small equipment. Um, servicing those and that, uh, boys' basketball is going great. No issues at all this year, so. That's good. Well, you have anything else?
Thank you. Uh, Jenny, I. Uh, the only thing I have is the week conference. All right.
Mayor.
Sorry, go ahead.
Just real quick, I'm subject to further research, because this is iPhone researcher. Uh, two hundred and fifty dollars a day.
Fine if we did not comply.
And if you're not compliant for a second year, it goes to five hundred dollars.
Okay. Any idea right off the top of my head, we just did the budget, but how much are our class B? Class B, what was it?
Class B and C is roughly four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay. Another example of why.
That's also, that is also. Published every year on the state. Website for the roads transportation, so that's public information on V-City. And they do that off of the calculation of miles of railroad that you have in your city.
Say, can I just ask what the days are for the conference?
Yes, April. Sixteenth through eighteenth, so you come down on Wednesday, you can travel that day. All right, yeah, is that half day? Yeah, it's an evening program on the sixteenth, and then it's all day Thursday and half day Friday.
Okay, thank you.
I just, I, I think registration is now open, but it's more booking your hotels, so just let me know if you'd like to go.
And you can also always cancel it last minute, so maybe getting your hotel.
And then, yeah, it's free cancellation of the hotel, but I, if you, I won't register you until you're committed.
Okay. Right, we're moving on to item number eight, which is a closed executive session for the purposes described in Utah Code A. Fifty-two dash four dash two oh five one eight for discussion of the character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual. Uh, I will need a motion. To enter the closed executive session.
I'll make a motion, we move to the closed executive session.
I'll say, you have to say why.
Oh.
For the same purpose?
For the same purpose as I already stated.
I have a motion and a second, um. Do, do I need to have a roll call? Okay. You do this, Councilmember Fawcett, yes, Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Weiss?
Yes.
Councilmember Mumm.
Yes.
All right, so motions have been made, but in the closed executive session, so I will excuse those of you that are not. Stay. Especially if you haven't been invited to.
And I would like a motion to adjourn.
When you don't adore. I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
And I'll second.
All right, motion of second elevator.
Bye.